Don't be shy.
I'm a nameplate.
Where is your name?
I don't have a nameplate anymore.
It has one that's missing.
Conspiracy.
Alright, well.
Demanding.
The 6:30, I am going to call to order the Monday, September 9th Select Board Meeting. If everyone would stand for those pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on mission under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Rudy. Visitor comments? Anyone regarding anything that isn't on the agenda? Good. Moving on. Discussion and vote on the new fire truck.
So, I'll let Chief P's go ahead and kind of give the explanation, but the board should know that the capital planning committee has been involved and they did just recently vote to support the request for a fire truck to be, to come before the board is elected.
Okay, and it hasn't gone in front of FinCon?
Nope.
Good evening.
Good morning.
So, the board's kind of aware, as far as we're aware, we've talked about it multiple times, the last three months or so, middle of June-ish, our Engine 1, which is our reserve piece, second due piece of fire apparatus, had an issue with pump system. We sent it out to Bulldog Fire Apparatus in Hockington, Mass. Got just kind of a rough idea of repairs for that truck. They were saying it was going to be about $100,000 to repair it back into, you know, shape we'd use it. Kind of hearing that, I spoke with Justine and we kind of were looking into other options. Couple of different options we kind of investigated and found weren't super feasible for the town, in my opinion, where Wales Fire was selling a used fire apparatus in 2006. NFPA recommends 25 years on fire apparatus. So, we looked into that. Price was already at 70,000, but it doesn't fit the needs of the town of Hardwick, in my opinion. The hose bed wasn't the proper, proper bed, didn't have enough water in the tank, personally.
I'm just going to back up just a hair. In saying that you looked at it, members of the capital planning went with you, Justine went with you. So, I just want people to be aware that it wasn't just Josh looking at fire trucks or, you know, it was a process where.
And we also brought in an outside fire chief as well, Chief Debrief from Lester came over and looked at it.
Right. I just wanted to, you know, make people aware of that. Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, we kind of all collectively decided that that's not what's in the best interest of the town, especially with the age and the price tag. I've been kind of looking through used fire apparatus online. Anything newer than 2015 is in the six, $700,000 range anyways. So, I feel that buying a new demo piece of fire apparatus for us would probably be the best option.
So, we did, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, we did look at one as well with the capital planning committee, myself, members of the fire department. We did bring one out and if you want to.
Yeah, so we brought out a 2024 demo truck. So, the manufacturers generally put out, you know, 20 or 30 of them and dispersed them around the country, just as a stock truck, so to speak, so they can bring around. We all kind of went up and looked at that. It would be pretty much the identical replacement, just 2024 to our Engine 2. So, six man cab, 1,000 gallons of water, 1,500 pump. So, it's basically just the 2024 model upgraded. It's not a fancy truck by any means, but it's definitely what I feel the town needs.
What are we looking at as far as the cost?
Total's about $820,000.
I think I talked to the capital planning committee, rather, about, about 860, just to have a little squish room with an increase in price by the town meeting, etc. Just to have a little bit of room there, because I hate to get it approved and then have to go back and say, hey, the price of the truck went up, the town we haven't approved.
Right now, we're operating with only one working.
So, we have one, one working engine, our Engine 2. That's our first due piece for every incident in town. That covers all of our motor vehicle accidents, our structure fires, our mutual aid calls that's out of town. That's a 1998. We have a 2006 tanker, which is what moves water to the fire. So, that's our, our backup, our second piece out the door. That's on the district day tanker task force list. List, our Engine 2 is actually on the strike force, or task force for fire, structure fires. We're on that for brush fires as well, so.
For 2006, we also need to kind of plan ahead for that one as well, because it is on the older side and I, we want to prevent kind of what's been happening, what happened with this one is, okay, well, now it's gone and now it's an emergency, you know, for public safety, you know. So, that is something that the chief and I have talked about is also planning, you know, planning ahead next time for, so it doesn't come down to a public safety emergency like, you know, it is right now.
Right. You know, for, for me right now, I'm just kind of hoping that the 1998 and the 2006 kind of hold together in the meantime until we can find something to replace it with. It's always the question of what's going to go wrong today. The last month or so for us has been rough with hydrant system breaks and all that, so.
So, we're looking at a debt exclusion.
Yeah, so we, we have been meeting, I've been meeting with Jess, I've been meeting with Jen and kind of looking at what are our options. It does look like a debt exclusion. We have been looking to lease to own, but we can't do a debt exclusion for a lease, so we'd be looking at a loan. I do have a call with Jess and our accountant and our financial advisor on Thursday, because I want to, you know, I have a lot of questions that I, I need to, I need to work through with our financial team, but it does look like a debt exclusion is going to, is, you know, unless it's a miracle, some other thing, but it does look like it's going to be our own option.
We can't budget, obviously. It will, the budget will carry this.
You're looking at, you know, five, seven, or 10-year lease and what that would look like, about, was it 10-year, was it 110 a year?
Yeah, 110 a year.
Thousand a year, yeah.
So, a debt exclusion has to pass town floor first.
Right.
And then we can move forward with it. So, that's the only, you know, and I think we talked about this previously, that, you know, we just have to make people aware of what's going on.
Yeah, and once I, you know, I wanted to kind of come to the, to the board and get the ducks in a row with the board, the capital planning committee and the finance committee, but what I'd like to do with the manufacturers interested in doing it is do a kind of an open Q and A, bring the truck out, have the townspeople be able to come up, look at it, ask us questions, talk about it.
That would probably be.
So, that way there's transparency to, you know, all the taxpayers as well, they can see what their dollars getting them.
That would probably be really beneficial, especially before a vote.
Right.
Yep. Do you, Chris, do you have anything you want to add at this point? I don't know if they've come before you get, you know, obviously, no, they haven't, so. Any words of wisdom or?
No, she's, I'm, it's the first I'm hearing about it, so I just want to get an idea of what the plan is here.
And you guys are definitely on the list, it's just the dates didn't line up to, to bring it to the, you guys before we brought it to the board, so.
Well, typically, a lot of times, capital planning will come to you guys to, you know, to run things by the finance committee, so I just don't.
I just think that the dates didn't line up in the right order here.
Yeah, because you'll want their support, obviously.
Absolutely.
I did invite the chair of the finance committee on the call, the financial advisor, because if I have a lot of questions, I'm sure he does too.
Yeah, perfect.
So.
Okay, good. So, vote, what are we looking for as far as a vote?
So, it kind of.
Just our.
It kind of goes into discussion and, on the second discussion in, on the agenda. I mean, if the board wants to vote to support.
Trying to see if this will could happen?
You know, getting it. I did, I did talk to the town clerk today to find out, you know, his availability and scheduling wise for, because then, you know, once it goes to town, a special town meeting, then it'd have to be, have to go to an election. It's, it's twofold with a debt exclusion, so we did have that conversation today. He's here too, if you have any questions. I think the next step would be if the board has any questions or comments and wants to, you know, vote to support moving forward with getting it in front of the townspeople or the town meeting.
I think it is necessary. I think that we have talked to the board, that it, you know, we would support it because it's necessary, so.
I think it's necessary too. I agree, I agree, but I also feel like we're managing from emergency only. We're not planning, we're not, you know, setting aside stuff, budgeting for stuff like this.
Well, and I think the, I, I agree, and it's been past practice and I think the past couple of years that has shifted where we're doing a much better job putting money into our stabilization and our capital stabilization, so we're working, you know, we're working forward, not, not backwards.
I get that.
Yeah.
But it should definitely go to finance and have them review it, find out what the rates, what you're looking at, what it's going to cost the town, the true cost of this. And also, in the past, I also said we could do fundraising, and you mentioned it was illegal. And I have documentation, my understanding, based off of state ethics and stuff like that, you follow certain guidelines, you definitely can fundraise for a fire truck.
Yeah, both. I believe the Fire Association could do that.
So, the Fire Association does fundraise right now. The Fire Association does tents, tables and chair rentals on weekends. That was originally intended to pay if a firefighter was injured or got killed on the, on the job in the line of duty in town. But the Firemen's Association's been purchasing all the uniforms for all of the firefighters on the Department Class A, Class B, like I'm wearing today. I'm more than happy to ask if they're, they're willing to help out the town. I just feel like, you know, that's a lot on, on my members or a lot additional on my members that, you know, they're hard to do it.
Well, it's also a lot on the townspeople around here.
I, and I agree.
You know, 850,000 is not a small price.
Right.
And a lot of people, can't speak for all people, but a lot, everyone's working on a budget.
I, I agree. And moving forward, I'd, I'd like to get a plan together to, to replace the apparatus before it becomes an emergency.
Exactly, exactly. Also, there's, have you heard of Vickers Consulting Group?
I have not.
Vickers Consulting Group is also grant writers for firemen, specific fire grants, stuff like that, especially volunteer firefighters like ourselves in this community. There's certain grants just for that. I mean, it couldn't hurt to reach out to them and talk, talk with them and even have them come from, in front of the board.
Usually I do submit a grant through FEMA through the assistance of firefighters or fire, for a piece of fire apparatus. And I'll continue to do that.
I totally get that and I understand that. I'm just saying, this group specializes in exactly what you need. And I got this information from the Brookfield Fire Chief. And he, he pays short money every year to this group to write him grants. And he's gotten almost a million dollars from it.
That's excellent. I'd be happy to take that info from him.
Okay. I mean, I support a fire truck.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'm hoping that we put this before the town and put it on the next town meeting.
The special?
The special. And run it by the FinCon. We have beaten this severely during the capital planning committee and it seems like the only way out.
Right.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
We'll just make sure all of our ducks are in a row before we get to that meeting.
Absolutely.
I like the idea of bringing the engine in and showing it to the town.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I, I want to be all about transparency for sure, to the board, to the townspeople. We, we and Justine had briefly talked about that as well, and she agreed that would be a pretty good idea, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully the manufacturers can do some to, to doing the same. I'm sure they are, so they may agree.
It gives people a chance to see what they're investing in, you know, so making a decision based on that. Which brings us to our next discussion and vote on the special town meeting date. So, I think the last time we discussed, we were looking at mid, mid to late October, if possible.
So, the clerk and I had a conversation today, looking at his calendar with his elections and everything. We're looking at the third week of October.
Okay.
Ryan, do you want to add anything?
Um, no.
So, what's, what day is better for you? Because I know between registration.
Well, we've got 10 days of registration, so really, I mean, so really, so if you do a Monday, that's going to be, that's going to be, you know, I think the last time we had a.
I feel like it was a Wednesday or Thursday or some, I don't know.
Yeah, Thursday, a Thursday night works. I mean, it's, it's up to, you know, your purview as to when and where. Thursdays make a voter registration on a Monday, so that's good. You know, Friday makes it a Tuesday. I don't think anybody wants to come out on a Friday.
Want to do it here?
We can, we just have to be cognizant of the fact that if we have a greater than a lot of people. I, we certainly could, and I could always let Seth at the school know, hey, you know, we need the school.
Do we have a backup plan?
Yeah, we could, because he's there until 10:00, so the thing is, is, you know, if it got to be something where we exceeded, was it 32 in here? Or even the hallway, I mean, if it got to be like 50, I could call him and just say, hey, we need to get 50 chairs set up and.
Can we do that side?
Could, but it's going to be dark.
Oh, true.
It's going to be dark at that point, you know, sun's going down really quick.
Oh, yeah, that's true, it's already dark.
We should just plan for the school.
I think we should plan for the school.
All right, then we'll just plan for the school.
There's, there's a handful of items on there that I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I would recommend the Thursday only because it makes my voter registration easier for the Monday. All the other days just mess everything up because it bumps into Sunday, Saturday, Friday, we're closed on Friday. I can look at the last dates if you really want.
Is it possible to do the 17th then instead of the 24th?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm starting in person voting on the 19th, but that shouldn't interfere with that, so.
Because I don't know that I'd make it back here in time. On the 24th.
Yeah, I can do the 17th, I can do the 17th and that should, you know.
That's still good.
We have to post it by the 3rd, so your next meeting, I'm presuming, is the 23rd?
Yeah.
So, you either have to have it ready by then or you're going to have it ready on the 30th weekend, but you've got the open meeting law training from 4:30 to 6:30, unless you folks want to schedule just a meeting and sign it.
We could schedule a meeting for that night just to sign it.
Okay. Yeah, you just got to post it by the 3rd.
Right.
So.
Well, because if we did the, let's see, if we did the 24th, it would still need to be posted by.
By the 10th.
The 10th?
I'm unavailable the 10th through about the 15th.
So.
But, you guess, you know.
Does that give us enough time if we go on the 30th? Do you think we're good?
I can get it done for the 30th.
Right.
I'm going to have it on the 17th.
That, yeah, that's, you know, that's three weeks, that shouldn't be long.
All right. Thank you. So, 10, 17, 6 PM?
That works, it did.
Six?
Yeah, it's your.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Six at the end. We'll hopefully plan for the elementary school, so you'll confirm that.
Obviously, if something changes, you can just come back and, and change that. You haven't, you haven't signed anything yet.
Right.
But, yeah, you can make a contingent upon the availability, but I don't think there's an issue, but I will. You know, hold off on your vote on that.
Okay.
No, no, you can vote on that. I was like, I was thinking if Seth, Seth's not going to have the school calendar, so that's just.
No, you're going to go through DODI, right? Yeah, you're going to check with DODI.
Exactly, so. If you want to make a contingent upon the school being available, then I can confirm.
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm hoping that we have the special town meeting on the 17th of October at 6:00 PM, contingent on the availability of the space at the school. I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to open the warrant or?
We certainly can. Anyone?
Missed that, I was coughing.
Oh, uh, vote to open the warrant.
I'll make a motion to open the warrant for this special, uh, special.
Town meeting.
Special town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
On October 17th at 6:00 PM. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Cross all the Ts. So, I think we can end it now?
Yep. And so, do we want to, we'll close it on the, our 23rd meeting so that it can be ready for the 30th, or?
Yep.
Perfect. So, folks have until the 23rd. Okay. Any other thoughts, discussion and comments? Chris, you good with that?
I have a meeting on the 17th, there's somebody to change it, but no, I'll, my vote will be there, so.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry.
On autopilot up here. Okay, um, yeah, because we do have a couple of other things that, that will get added to that.
Maybe things we don't even know about yet.
Right, so, okay, perfect. Discussion and vote on the recycling center price list.
So, numbers of the recycling center are here. You have some of the correspondences in your package. However, I was hoping for like a memo on the request and the rationale behind it, but I know that the members are here and can, can speak to it.
Sure. Yeah, so Ryan has left, but he did send an email a couple of years ago that anything charged at the recycling center has to go through the Select Board. So, historically, that hasn't happened.
We used to do it years ago, yes.
Maybe before my time.
No, but Teresa was here, we always.
Yeah, okay, yeah, well, Teresa did everything.
Right, because she was dual, right.
She was dual and.
But we used to vote on the price increase and, yep, the sticker increases, all that. It would be based on your recommendation and we would just say yay, that we, obviously, if it's coming from the commission.
Yeah, because we have all the fees, like non-sticker holder, you know, so there, there was no record that had ever gone through the Select Board, and Teresa didn't tell us that, so. All right, so you have, you have the documents? And then, in terms of, I know at one point Teresa said, well, everybody has to buy a sticker, including the people that work there. And that is, that would actually make a couple of employees quit. And if you have a student from Quavon who lives in Berry, you can't ask them to pay $80 out of town to come and volunteer at the recycling center. So, we just wanted to, we voted as a commission that we would like to exempt certain people from those sticker fees, and that would be active volunteers and staff. And those numbers are quite small, so it's not like we're trying to exempt 20 or 30 people.
Well, I think it's a, it's a, you know, just a bonus, yeah, it's a benefit of working there or volunteering there, yeah.
Yeah, so if you could just approve that, we'll, we'll be clean. And also, there's certain services we provide without a sticker fee. And some of them are like the Planet Aid donation boxes, which is obvious, the book bin, redemption, can bottle drop off, we don't ask for a sticker for someone to do that. And then, as far as the pickup, then that organization may not have a sticker to pick those up. And we just can't ask paid staff.
Oh, like so, Planet Aid, picking up their clothes or the, or the bottles or the.
Like the bottles, like go to the, you know, baseball team or whatever. We're not going to demand that you have a sticker to pick them up, so. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
So, I would take a motion to accept the Hardwick Recycling Center guidelines and all applicable fee charts and the exemption of employees and volunteers.
I saw a move. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Now you're covered. Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and vote to adopt the Town of Hardwick Hazard Mitigation Plan.
This is a great thing.
Yes.
At the Hazard Mitigation Plan. A lot of people worked on it, maybe a dozen people. We had a consulting. Yep, several meetings about it, and we had a consulting firm given to us by, paid for by FEMA. So, we got a nice assist with that. What it is, is an update every five years to FEMA, what the town is at risk for and how we are moving to minimize those risks, recovery, resilience. It opens, now that it's been accepted by FEMA, what we have to do is, is adopt it. It won't change anything, it's a big plan, has a lot of details, and what it is, is allows us to apply for brick grants, building resilience, infrastructure, something or other, and MVP, this kind of thing. So, it opens up all sorts of possibilities and I would urge us to vote to adopt it.
They're not legal. So, let's take a motion here.
Make a motion for the, to adopt the Town of Hardwick Hazard Mitigation Plan? I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may, the, there's a rumor that the roof on the school perhaps is in need of repair. There's a gentleman, Mark Granato, who works for CMRPC, he's also Homeland Security Agent. Have to make sure that I tag all the electronic signs and light towers, the stuff that we've gotten from FEMA over the years, and he's watching that. But he and Justine and I had a meeting and we came up with this brilliant idea that since we're, since I'm trying to figure out a way to air condition the building, because it's our public shelter and things are getting warmer, so why not put solar on the roof of the school to power the air conditioning? Because sometimes you get a new roof that way. So, that would be a brick grant and.
That'd be amazing.
Well, it would be a real, it would be a hat trick, right?
Yeah.
So, we're, I'm proceeding with that, it's still in fantasy stages, but that would, this Hazard Mitigation Plan sets us up for.
To be able to do that.
So, hope.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I have the resolution if you guys want to sign it.
Did we vote to do this?
Yeah, we just accepted it and then, yep.
I would say that Sandy did a lot of the work, I would just leave her with requests. She and I sat there for hours going through these spreadsheets with these nitty little species. That's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Meeting minutes approvals, August 12th, 2024, and July 8th, 2024. I can't vote on the August 12th ones, I wasn't here.
Well, I move that we accept the minutes for August 12th, 2024. I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And July 8th?
I move that we accept the minutes from July 8th, 2024. I'll second the motion to approve the minutes from July 8th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have anything else, Justine?
So I don't have a town administrative report, just because I wasn't there, but I do want to say that while I was out, Sandy and Jen really held down the fort, and they did an amazing job. That was really amazing. Today, I, I actually had a meeting with Bill and the Quabin superintendent and the business manager, I think it went really well.
It is.
I also met with the chair of the finance committee, Mr. Colross, we're going to be meeting again in a couple of weeks, that also went really great.
Are we going to have a joint meeting with them at some point to start the budgeting?
I did talk to him about that.
So keep asking, and it hasn't happened.
I did. So he would like to move it to October, because they're just not ready.
Okay.
So, we talked about that today.
Okay.
So we'll make sure that is on in October, part of our total meetings.
Okay. Excellent. Good to hear that. Everything went well last week. Slickman, round deal?
The elevator at the Old Town Hall.
Yep.
We paid $1,800 in August, and, was it August or July?
It was July.
July, a month before the fair.
Right.
And the day of the fair, it cracked up. So I spent half a day waiting for the tech to arrive from Springfield, I got a little hot. The woman that runs, the person that runs the answering service and dispatch was real hard to work with, I thought. I also had to call her, because I was told that it broke, and I didn't go to look, I just called for help, and then, and then I decided I better check, so I called somebody else that was there, and they said, no, it's working, so I canceled the emergency call. But then I got a call back from somebody that should know, and they said, no, it is not working, so I had to call and abase myself and apologize. So anyway, it was, it was a great Friday afternoon.
Did it get resolved?
Yeah, final, but I don't want to pay.
For them to come back after, right?
If we paid $1,800, because it's specifically the same thing that they repaired a month before, which, I don't want to use bad language, so.
And you know, you're aware of this, so.
So we have not received a bill for that, for the day of the fair, and I already told Sandy that if we are to get a bill, to give it to me, because I'm going to call them and we're going to have a conversation.
Yeah, okay.
I had to, I had to certify overtime, it was, it was a hard afternoon.
It ended great, though, you hung out with me.
It was.
Yeah.
And we fixed the stairs, the front portico, the slabs of stone, and everything worked very well. So I would just like to share this information that I have on the summary from the state ethics, on the formal opinion on fundraising and stuff like that, so, you know, to create it.
Sure.
And, thank you. I have to take my ethics test, all right. I have a nap.
Looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn? I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.